Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 September 17, 2019. We'd like to begin our city council meeting as we always do at the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. O'Doherty?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Stalder?
Here.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel?
Present.
Shumway?
Here.
That's six present and three absent, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum, and we'd like to begin this meeting with public comments. Now, our public comments are at the beginning and also at the end of our city council meeting. We have a timer on the wall. You have three minutes. When you come up, just introduce yourself, give us your name, and then as soon as you start your comments, we'll start the clock running. At the end of the three minutes, we'll ask you to, if you have other things you want to bring before the council, save it for the end, and you get another three minutes. So we'll try to stick to the three-minute time. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comments on any topic? Yes, come forward. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Trey Campbell. I'm the new Director of Government and Community Affairs for ASUW's 107th Administration. So on behalf of myself, our student body president, Jason Wilkins, and our student body vice president, John Houghton, I'd like to say that we're very excited to work with the city council and the city of Laramie to make this a better place for students and a better city as a whole. Jason and John ran on the three platforms of education and transparency, diversity, and sustainability. So we're excited to work with all of you this year and the coming semesters as we prepare for both the census and a few other things facing our campus and the city of Laramie as a whole. So I hope we can have an excellent working relationship going forward, and I look forward to each, meeting each one of you individually and working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Less than a minute. Thank you. And just, I will say this. I think our relationship is excellent. Thank you for being here, which represents, you know, the desire we have to have town and gown, our relationship. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Anyone else that would like to come forward to make public comments? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Richard Wilkins, and I live at 350 North Fourth Street. And I'm here because I missed the last meeting because I didn't realize there was going to be one. But I would like to talk about the parking. The curbing has been repainted white some places, but in front of my house, it's 65 feet of yellow paint. Across the street from me, it's 65 feet of yellow paint. But everywhere else, it looks like the paint has been painted over most places to give people their parking back. And I'm here to try to get my parking back. I can't understand why on my side of the street, it's from Clark Street, it's 65 foot of yellow paint, and across the street, it's 65 foot of yellow paint. I don't know what the reason for it would be because the other paint has been removed. And I would like to park in front of my house. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to kind of make comment? Seeing no others, we'll close the public comment period. And now I'd ask the Vice Mayor if he would take us through any changes or additions and setting of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the following changes to the agenda be approved, and it comes under number 20 in our regular agenda adjourned to executive session regarding personnel. We would add litigation and land negotiations to personnel, and item number 20.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion to change the agenda has been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor, or Vice Mayor Gabriel?
I would move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Okay. It's, that motion has been made and it's been seconded by Counselor Schuster. All in favor of setting the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, the next item we have, we, today we don't have any proclamations and no presentations. We do have three public hearings, so I've asked the city clerk if she would read the notice of the first public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 26th day of August 2019, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a transfer of retail liquor license number nine from Boxcar Murphy LLC to Electra Property Holdings LLC, 354 West University Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the city of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So if there's anyone here that would like to make, any of the public that would like to make any comments regarding this transfer of a retail liquor license, would you please come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll, we'll close this public hearing and go to the next public hearing. Ask the city clerk if she'd read the notice of this next public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 28th day of August 2019, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a new bar and grill liquor license number BG-7 for Cask 307 LLC, doing business as Cask 307, at 1111 East Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the city of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So anyone that would like to make comment regarding this new bar and grill liquor license, you're welcome to come forward and make comment. I believe we have 10 bar and grill licenses. This is eight for your information. There are still two available. I don't see anyone coming forward to make comments on this, and so we'll close the second public hearing and go on to the third public hearing. And I'd ask the city clerk to read the notice of the next public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 26th day of August 2019, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a transfer of retail liquor license number 12 from RMH Franchise Corporation to AB Laramie, Wyoming LLC, located at 3209 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the city of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone here to make comment regarding this transfer of a liquor license? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Now, I'll go to the city manager. Are there any announcements from, from the city this meeting?
No announcements, Mayor.
So back to the Vice Mayor, Gabriel, to take us through the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce.
Point of order.
Yes.
After we vote, probably, we skip number seven, so...
Okay, let's go back to seven.
Should we vote?
Yeah, we need to finish this one before...
Okay. That's my mistake. So item number seven is disclosures. Let's, you know what? We need to do disclosures because that could include consent agenda. So can we backtrack, and then I'll, then I'll ask the Vice Mayor to reintroduce. Is that okay?
Since the motion has been stated, if we would like to make, have a motion to withdraw the motion, then we can remove the motion that's on the floor.
Okay. The maker of the motion will need to do that.
I would ask that the motion I made be withdrawn.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so that's been done. Thank you for that.
Second test agree.
The second agrees.
Okay. Apologize for my oversight on that. So yes?
And then if we could do roll call because we do need a two-thirds vote on that.
Okay. Let's do roll call on the, on the withdrawal of this, hopefully.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. O'Doherty?
Here.
Pierce?
Yes.
It's yes or no.
Yes.
Yes or no.
We're doing great.
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two nos, Your Honor. Or two absent.
Okay, so that, that meets the requirement of the two-thirds of the, of the group. So now let's go back. Are there any disclosures from anyone on the city council that has any, any item that they want to disclose regarding conflicts of interest on any of the items on the consent or regular agenda? Hearing none, we'll go back to the Vice Mayor, and if you'll take us back through what you've...
I've had practice reading this. Shall we try this again?
I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Again, the motion's been made by the Vice Mayor, and it's been seconded by Counselor Pierce. But we have roll call on the approval of the consent agenda.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. All the items on the consent agenda have been approved. Now we go to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 11. I'd ask the Vice Mayor to introduce that to, to us.
Thank you, Mayor, and it is indeed a pleasure that I move a council-approved resolution 2019-69 authorizing that the east pedestrian bridge in La Proul Park be named Sisters Bridge and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schuster, and, yes, please, please come forward.
I'm not very good at these things. I'm Scott Hunter, the city of Laramie Parks manager. This young man, Tanner Hyde, approached me about a year ago or so about doing an Eagle Scout project. He's put in a lot of hard work, a lot of legwork, and I don't want to steal his thunder. And so as what I'm going to do, I'm going to go ahead and let him come forward and introduce himself and go over this project. And as he comes forward, I'm going to whisper in his ear.
While you're whispering, I want to thank Scott Hunter for all the great things he does for the city.
So nice and easy.
Yeah.
All right. Tanner, welcome.
Thank you.
For being here and...
Thank you for inviting me here today. So I'm proposing that we name the Easternmost Bridge in La Proul Park Sisters Bridge. To start off, I'm going to go over the relevant conditions of the naming policy. There's four of them. The first one is the, the proposals to name any park facility may be initiated by any citizen of the city. They also need to include reasons for the proposed name. The third point is they have to provide proof of community support, and, the fourth one is that they need to name the, name the facility after a group of donors that have provided a considerable sacrifice of, a donation. So again, I propose to name the Easternmost Bridge of La Proul Park. It's a concrete bridge that's used by pedestrians and cyclists across Spring Creek, and it provides major access to the eastern part of La Proul, of Huckfin Pond in La Proul Park, as well as the disc golf course. To start off, or to continue, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background as to what I've done for this bridge. So I worked on this bridge for my Eagle Scout project. For those of you who don't know, the Eagle is the highest rank you can achieve in the Boy Scouting system, and the final requirement to earn this Eagle rank is the scout in question has to develop and lead a large service project for the community. When I was thinking about what to do for my Eagle project, I wanted it to be personal. I have two sisters with special needs, and one of them's in a wheelchair and the other will be soon. This brings up a major question of handicap accessibility around Laramie. Our favorite family activity is coincidentally to go and fish at Huckfin Pond. However, there isn't very good accessibility there, so for my project, I wanted to improve the accessibility of this bridge. So the existing facility had really steep stairs, and it was starting to erode away, and it was in need of some uptake. From the bridge to the pond, it was just a rough dirt track that was very difficult to get wheelchairs over to the pond. So my, so I proposed for my project to install concrete ADA accessible ramps with side railings and a sidewalk down to the pond. So as I've said before, this project was inspired by my two sisters. As you can see, the, one of them's in a wheelchair and the other one, it will be soon. My sister in the wheelchair is named Dodger Lynn, and the other one is named Nora. And as you can see, we visit the pond a lot, and it's one of our favorite places to go. So for this project, I had a lot of community support. During the project, we, I had 74 community members that helped volunteer, as well as several of the local businesses that donated time and materials. I've also received dozens of thanks from pedestrians, cyclists, dog walkers, basically everyone who uses this bridge has, appreciates the improvement that has been done. Also, I've received several letters, emails, and social media comments supporting this project, as well as, there's a couple news articles. These news articles are in the packet that Mr. Feazer provided you before the presentation. So next, I'd like to give you some details of the donations I've done. I've provided topographic survey, geotechnical investigation, engineering and design, bidding and administration, and the construction and coordination of this project. This project had 474 recorded man-hours, which is a lot for an Eagle project, 109 of which were logged by myself, and 162 of which were logged by fellow scout members in my scouting troop. However, we had 203 man-hours logged from community volunteers. This project saved the city approximately $28,000. On the next slide, I have some before and after pictures. This is the north side of the bridge, and as you can see, there is the ramp and the north sidewalk that leads up to the existing parking lot. The other pictures, this is on the south side, and as you can see down below, there was some erosion that was starting to eat away underneath the steps. You can now see that this has been replaced by the concrete ramps with the handrails. The next pictures shows the existing dirt path that existed before the project and the concrete sidewalk that is now there. If I get your support and approval for the naming of this bridge, I have a plaque I would like to install commemorating the project and giving thanks to the community members that helped this project happen. So I'd like to leave that with you, and thank you.
Tanner, I want to thank you for an outstanding presentation.
Thank you.
Great, you're a great example, not only to your family but to the community, and this, very, very thoughtful, very involved, and I will tell you, I've been involved in a lot of Eagle projects. I've never seen one so complete and comprehensive. You've done an outstanding job, and I, I understand you have done well beyond the requirements for Eagle Scout. You have, I think, seven or six or seven poems, which is every five merit badges you get more, and so. You, you have left a legacy not only for your sisters but for your family, for the community. You've saved us a lot of money, and we appreciate that presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And great success in your future. I think you have a great start, good family, and everything's going to... Want to have the Vice Mayor make comments too because he's been involved in this.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say how appreciative and how proud we are of your work, Tanner, and I know your dad had a lot to do with it. As, as an engineer, he helped a lot with this because this was a, a major project indeed to try to get all of the construction and all of the engineering done properly. We were out there on a Saturday morning, and it was just amazing to see the volunteers and all the concrete workers coming out, and, you know, they would show us what to do, and they had the, even the smallest of children out there trying to, to help, you know, trying to get this concrete laid properly and smoothed out, and it was just a tremendous Saturday, and it was very, I was very proud to be out there to be, you know, just to see, be a part of the whole project, and to see it come to fruition is, is just amazing, and...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your, for your efforts. It took a lot. We, we appreciate that.
Thank you. I was just glad to see you out there.
Bet. Thanks, Mayor.
Now, this is an item that we'll be voting on in council. Is there any other comments or comments or questions that comes from the council? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. It's no small thing to name a facility or, at a park, or anything really in our park system at all. In fact, I recall the committee that wrestles with those things before the city council takes them up, spending a lot of time on creating a policy on exactly what it is that we want to see before we even consider doing something like that. And I'll certainly be supporting this, but it's not something that we do with regularity. It's not something that we do lightly. It's a lot of work. I think Mr. Hyde demonstrated that to us, and it's something that's really carefully considered by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in this council before we make that type of change or rename a facility. So it's a big deal, and I think in this case, it's appropriate, and I think this provides an excellent example of exactly what it is that the city will consider and look at before we rename a facility. So I think that's worth saying, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor O'Doherty?
I'm the liaison on the Disability Council, and I'll bring this to your attention, I'm sure. I know that our city strives to make things more accessible, especially recreation opportunities, but there's a long way to go, and it would be hard to address every issue, and I'm just really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the city council? Anyone from the audience or the public that would like to make comments regarding this item before us? Again, council, anything before we go to the vote? Could we have roll call?
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
So that passes. And at this time, I think it would be appropriate for us to give an applause to Tanner for all of his...
Tanner, would you like to announce the ceremony going on Saturday?
Uh, sure.
If you wouldn't mind coming back up? I think it's important that everybody knows what's going on with the plaque and so on.
Um, so yeah. So whenever a scout is awarded any of his awards, it's done in a ceremony called a Court of Honor. The Eagle Court of Honor is in a spec, is a special one, and I will have, be having my Eagle Court of Honor where I'll be awarded the award, and will be installing that plaque to commemorate the local businesses. That will be this Saturday at the, at the bridge at 2 o'clock PM, so.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Tanner.
Thank you for that announcement. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is item number 12. Counselor Pierce?
Okay. I move to approve the application to transfer retail liquor license number nine from Boxcar Murphy LLC to Electra Property LLC, VVA Bud's Bar located at 354 West University Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing terms September 30, 2019 through May 7, 2020, contingent on the closing of sale, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Gabriel. City Clerk Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The application that you have before you tonight was received in the office of the city clerk on August 26. We have reviewed it for completion and have not found anything from city staff that needs to be reviewed. We have also sent it to the Wyoming Liquor Division for review, and they have no further concerns either. The plans for this property are to follow a similar business plan that currently exists there. It would just be simply transferring the ownership of the property and the liquor license. With that, we do have our applicant in the audience today, Shelley. So if you have any questions for her, she said she would be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the city clerk addressed it, because of course I was going to ask if the new owners were going to be willing to share a little bit about what their future plans for the place we're going to be, but I think I heard that the plan is just to continue operating it as a small neighborhood bar. But if you want to add a little bit to that?
No, I would like to keep it as is. I think that's what the clientele would like as well, and just keep it the same.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's great to hear because I think I could anticipate questions from the neighborhood over there about it. There aren't a lot of businesses in that particular neighborhood. That one's been there for a long time, and it's changed ownership a few times within the last couple of years, and I think that sometimes generates concern and questions about whether businesses are going to stick around. So I'm pleased to hear that on behalf of that neighborhood that I don't represent, but I used to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
That, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We want to know about good popcorn.
Counselor Pierce?
Popcorn? Good popcorn?
The popcorn?
Yeah.
I think people probably like the popcorn.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Or any other... Any other questions for the applicant or any other questions from anyone on the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything from anyone in the audience regarding this item? Any further questions, comments from the council before we vote? Let's go to roll call.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos and two absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item passes and the transfer has been authorized. Item number thirteen, Councilor O'Doherty?
I move that city council approve the application for a new bar and grill liquor license number BG seven to Cask three oh seven LLC, doing business as Cask three oh seven, located at one 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 East Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term September eighteenth twenty nineteen through May seventh of twenty twenty and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Councilor Pierce. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the application before you um was received in the office of the city clerk on the twenty-eighth of August. Um, again, staff have reviewed this application um and do not have any immediate concerns. Um, she is still finishing a few um construction projects in the business, um but hopes to be open soon. Um, Leslie did give me a little bit of background to share with you. Um, she says she's lived in Laramie since two thousand eight. Um, she has a daughter in the eighth grade. Um, their business plan is to open a wine bar, really um came from a mutual love of wine with her partner Melissa Mortensen. Um, they've worked together for about a year and a half and would meet for wine after work in the back room and discuss um which ones we loved. Uh, we called it our Wine Club. We had actually thought about moving to Colorado to pursue a career in the wine industry when she approached me about actually opening a wine and tapas bar in Laramie, um something we had discussed many times before. From there, um we just decided to go for it. We are so excited to get to work in the industry. Um, I always wanted to and stay, to stay in Laramie, um which we both consider to be our home. I am currently taking classes through the WSET program um to learn more about wine and hope to go to the master's court of... How do you say? Thank you. Smollet in the next few years. Um, we also had such a positive reaction to our idea from people in the community that felt like it would be a great fit, which is incredibly exciting. Um, so, uh with that, um Leslie is here if you have any questions, um as well as um Melissa, right? No, not Melissa. But Leslie's here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the city council on any item or if they want to have a question for the applicant? I'll thank the applicant for being here. Is there anything from the public regarding this item that you'd like to make comment regarding this license? Seeing them back to the council. Roll call.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. So that item passes. All your work is paying off. All right, let's go to the next item, item number fourteen, Councilor Stalter.
Okay. I move to approve the application to transfer retail liquor license number twelve from RMH Franchise Corporation to AV Laramie, Wyoming LLC, doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar located at thirty-two oh nine Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term September eighteenth twenty nineteen through May seventh twenty twenty and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Councilor Pierce. Any discussion from the council? Oh, I'm sorry. City Clerk Bartholomew.
Uh, the current application for you, Mayor and Council, um was received in the city clerk's office on August twenty-ninth. Um, we have reviewed the application for completion um amongst city staff and we find no concerns with the application. Um, the Wyoming Liquor Division has reviewed it as well and they have no further concerns. Um, the application is to transfer from one ownership to the next. Um, there were four total um licenses in the state of Wyoming that were transferring at the same time. So, um with that, I do not believe that we have a representative from Applebee's. I do stand to be corrected if there is. Um, with that, if you have any questions though, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions that our city clerk could answer? Any comments, questions from the audience? Back to the council, anything? Roll call.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos and two absent, Your Honor.
So item number fourteen also passes for the transfer of the license on that franchise. Item number fifteen, Councilor Pierce?
Okay, I move that council approve the agreement with Visionary Communications for broadband services and amend the twenty twenty fiscal budget by fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
I'm going to say that the second is by Vice Mayor Gabriel. Our IT manager, Jonathan Rhodes, will introduce this to us.
Yes, Councilor Mayor. Um, so in discussions related to Visionary getting access to public right-of-way for a fiber project, they were awarded with the state of Wyoming for the school district. Um, we discussed how close some of our city buildings are to areas that they would already be running fiber. And so Visionary offered the city an opportunity to extend fiber to some of our buildings. And so this agreement will add ten gigabit fiber connectivity between the city hall campus here, the recreation center and fire station three where our emergency operations center and backup dispatch center is located. Um, adding ten gigabit connections will allow us to reduce server and storage hardware needs at the recreation center. Um, in your packet, there's some cost reduction over ten years of what hardware would not need to be replaced. Um, so that can help o- offset some of the costs long-term. Um, the cost for the ten gigabit links for city hall and the recreation center would come out of the general fund. The connection to the backup dispatch center will allow us to live sync our public safety data and keep the backup dispatch site in a state ready in case an incident warrants relocation to that site. Um, and the cost for the link at the backup dispatch center would come from E-nine-one-one funds. The buildings currently are connected with one gigabit um wireless to the recreation center and a four hundred megabit connection to the backup dispatch center. The connection to the backup dispatch center is not fast enough to support the load that would need to have the instantaneous live connection. Um, and so this ten gigabit fiber connection um would allow for that. Um, in addition, this agreement also provides a redundant link for our phone and nine-one-one system to the Laramie County, Laramie County Combined Communication Center called El Quad C over in Cheyenne in exchange for some rack space in our city hall data center. So this new redundant link is much faster than our current single T-one line. A T-one line is about one point five megabit. They're offering us a one hundred megabit connection to Cheyenne for the backup for the nine-one-one system. And there's no direct cost for this. It's in exchange for rack space which we have available here at city hall. And Stacy McDonald, the Director of Public Relations for Visionary Broadband is here and she might like to add a few words.
Welcome, Stacy. Thank you for being here today. Sounds like we're making some big leaps in our technology at the city.
It, it's exciting. It's exciting to be here and uh I'm probably the most low-tech person at Visionary. Uh, and so Jonathan's been so helpful and, and everyone from the city's been so helpful in helping us think about this and uh nine-one-one service is obviously critical. Uh, so it's important to us that everybody has the fastest um and redundant service that they can for those kind of services, but I'm also really excited because we're coming in to serve the schools with fiber through this bid and then we're working with the city to do some exciting things to help them get a little better service. And then we're going to additionally offer fiber to businesses in the community and we also have added, since I was here last time, two more towers to your community. And so this is my very low-tech um tower map that I'm happy to pass around. This is our tower. The green is where we can offer service. So all the green area, we can pretty much offer wireless service to all of Laramie right now and we've just in, done that in the time period that we've been um talking through this fiber connection with you all is we've just been increasing our service in your area as well. So, even though it is exciting about the fiber and then it's exciting about what we're doing with the city, it's exciting for the whole town because we're now able to offer this service fifty megabytes uh and higher to residents all over the community.
Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for either Jonathan Rhodes or Stacy regarding this opportunity for the city? I, my understa- you've, we have met with Visionary before where you came and introduced, you know, the, your contract you have statewide with schools.
Right.
There was the question, how can we benefit from this? And obviously this is an answer to that question or concern that we had. So, appreciate you bringing this forward to us for us to consider.
Well, we're really excited about Laramie and um your community's been so welcoming to us and everyone from the city's been so welcoming to us that it just makes us want to invest here and, and uh partner with you in lots of different ways. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you. Anything from the audience regarding this? Okay, let's go back to council. Any other comments from the council before we vote on this and you can?
Can I go?
Go back to your seat. We may bring you back forward, but I think we're just excited to get to the vote on this. Do we have roll call?
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. So that item also passes. Item number sixteen, Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. The title of this is Original Ordinance Number Two Thousand Four Vacating the Entirety of an Undeveloped Right-of-Way Running North-South Along Block One Nineteen, Lots One and Five and Block One Twenty of West Laramie Subdivision. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number Two Thousand Four on First Reading Vacating Approximately Point One Nine Five Acre Area of Right-of-Way Between Lot One and Five of Block One Nineteen and Block One Twenty of the West Laramie Subdivision as recommended by the Planning Commission based on findings of facts and conclusions of law and set a public hearing on October first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Councilor Weaver. Matt, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Got to write this down.
You're good. No worries.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, Council, good to see you all. As Councilor Schuster stated, uh, this is an unused portion of Taylor Street. The city has no plans or has had or never had plans to develop this area. Um, basically the vacation, what it would do is split the lot down the middle with each adjoining lot getting its equal share of the vacation. So, um, for the lots to the west side, basically you would, sorry, got to get my map. Uh, for the lots to the west side, you would split those exactly at their adjoining boundary in the middle and they would get the top and bottom half of that split down the middle portion of Taylor Street. Um, along with this application, there is a lot line adjustment that will have to be submitted within ten days of approval of the vacation. Um, what this will do is give access to that bottom left lot of uh block one nineteen. Basically, the portion that was vacated to the northern part of block one nineteen uh will essentially be just used as a driveway or a ingress, egress path to the bottom lot. Um, as for zoning around this area, uh, it is generally B-two and C-two with some R-three on the west side. Uh, you have um Mobile Home Park and Manufacturer to the north, uh Manufacturer to the south, um, the old game and fish area to the east, uh, as well as Wyoming Analytical Labs to the west. Um, at the August twenty-sixth Planning Commission uh meeting, Planning Commission recommended approval of this vacation uh with six yes, zero no and one absent. Um, within the vacation there is sewer, water and overhead electrical lines. Um, that's, that's all I have. I'm here for any questions. I believe we have a representative here as well for later on.
Councilor Schuster?
Um, so you said sewer and water. Is there any easements through that area that there is existing water line, sewer lines, anything like that?
There is existing sewer and water lines as well as overhead utilities and there are easements for all of these put in.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Councilor O'Doherty?
I have a dumb question. Do all the property owners want this extra land to take care of?
That's what we understand. Um, and, and I mean, it just, it does make that bottom portion more developable. Um, the only access to uh, I believe it's lot five A of block one nineteen, um, would be from the south in that corner where it's basically just the alleyway there. But, yes, my understanding at least.
Is that everything, Councilor O'Doherty?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Councilor Pierce?
So just remind me, in cases like this, do we notify the neighborhood? Do we know like the three hundred?
Right. Yes. Um, uh, every, every property owner had to sign off on this and Planning Department does send out a notification to the neighbors within three hundred feet uh fifteen days prior to any hearing. And so they were notified for Planning Commission and they have been notified for the public hearing in two weeks.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? Back to the council. Anything the council has on any comments regarding this proposal? Roll call.
Harrington, absent. McKinney, absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos and two absent, Your Honor.
All right, that item passes. Item number seventeen, Councilor O'Doherty?
I move council approve the State Loan and Investment Board SLIB Grant Agreement, CWC, Ethan, one, three, four, two, seven, AL, for West Laramie Stormwater Improvements and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Councilor Pierce. Mr. Webb?
Excuse me, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Uh, this item may sound familiar to you. We've talked about it a couple of times. Um, on the June fourth meeting, uh, council authorized the submittal of an application to SLIB for this grant. Uh, basically this was uh unused funds from the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen countywide consensus monies. Uh, that project at that time was the beeline replacement Garfield Park. Hundred and seventy-nine thousand, hundred and thirteen dollars uh was unused monies. And so we, uh, with your approval, we did the uh grant request to SLIB uh to reallocate that money to the West Laramie Stormwater Improvements Project. Um, is all we're doing tonight is just asking you to allow the mayor to sign that grant agreement. Any questions?
Councilor O'Doherty?
Does that mean they already, the SLIB board's already?
Yes, I'm sorry. On August eighth, uh, it was approved at SLIB. Yes, I'm sorry. On August 8, it was approved at SLIB.
And with your authorization, then we also say that we're willing to accept, you know, a transfer to this project. Any other questions regarding this item? Exciting the opportunity we have to continue to make progress in West Laramie.
One piece at a time.
We're making progress.
Some giant steps. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience regarding this? Comments from the council? All right, let's vote.
Harrington absent, McKinney absent, Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero no's, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the items on the regular agenda. We need to have more controversial items because we seem to get through this rather quickly.
I disagree, Mr. Mayor. We've had plenty of those meetings recently.
And I know there's been a lot of work preparing to get to where we are. It's been a good meeting. Let's go to item number 18, which is again, public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comments regarding any item? Seeing then, we'll go to... Back to the council. Are there any items that the council would like to bring forward for future council work session topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Weaver.
On that topic, I'm not personally mentioning anything, but I think after our meeting with representatives from the Laramie Youth Council and some of the discussions we had there, I think it's reasonable for us to anticipate that some of those proposals will want to work their way through the City Council's process and may and probably will have to go through the... And will need to go through a work session. I think we can anticipate some of those, but of course, we don't have any specifics yet until they've done some more of their work.
Yeah, their pitch where they'll receive items and then they'll move forward. And that could then come to the council for our participation. By the way, the Laramie Youth Council, as you mentioned, is doing a great job, working hard.
I agree. Representing the city well. It certainly was fun to meet with them. So, Mr. Mayor, I just think we probably could anticipate needing to keep some space in that work session calendar for whatever they're bringing forward soon.
Anything else, Councilor Pierce?
You know, and I think with our government relations representative from ASUW, it might be also nice to potentially reach out and see if they have any issues. I know of one from previous discussions with the last administration, and some of them are... To maybe have a discussion with them regarding what they see as some issues moving forward that we could partner on and work together on, so...
On our sk... Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we do that, you know, kind of very casually or if we turn it into a work session, which I don't necessarily think is quite right. But I mean, if we could have a discussion, maybe?
Let's go to the city manager, then we'll go to Councilor Weaver.
Council, as was indicated by the ASUW representative, we are partnered with them this year on a project, which is the 2020 Census. They were a key and very important partner in getting a better census count in 2010. We expect they'll be a key and important partner in this coming spring as well. So to that point, if you would like maybe a work session to just update on what that partnership looks like for 2020 Census, that would be timely and something we could probably do in the next few months for you.
Council Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Councilor Pierce's question and also some comments the city manager just made, it seems like it may have been a while since the City Council had a joint meeting with ASUW. I know that has happened some in the past. It seems like there's a number of topics, the Census being a huge one, construction at UW being another one, and some of the other individual issues that members of that group may want. That's something... I don't know if we would do that as a work session, but that might be something worth doing, is having a joint meeting. I know some of you remember doing that before. I don't know if that's something we'd want to look at. And would that be a work session where we sat down with all of them as a whole? Is that something anybody else is interested in doing?
On your calendars, we have a work session with Neil Theobald, the active president on October the 8th. And he will bring forward items, but you're being more comprehensive to bring in all of the university...
The student government.
Student.
Yeah, ASUW. They meet Tuesday nights, Mr. Mayor, like we do. So, you know, sometimes to get everybody to come together.
Several staff members and various council members have been meeting with the university on the task force.
Sure.
I sit there, and so we're getting a lot of items from them. And it's been my sense, sitting on that task force, that they're very willing to work with us. They're very open to the suggestions that we make. Our chief of police, our far chief, our city manager and staff made proposals that they were open to. So I think they're willing to work with us. Obviously, there's always going to be some things that we want to sit down and at the table and discuss. I think that's important, and I think that's what you alluded to.
But partially, Mr. Mayor, I'm not necessarily talking about our relationship with the University of Wyoming's administration. I appreciate the work that those of you that have been going to the meetings on the building task force have been doing. I'm more specifically inquiring about meeting with their student government body.
Sure.
And maybe there isn't a lot of interest in that. I do recall meetings in the past where we did that. That's all.
Let's explore... Anybody else want... Interested in doing that? Let's go ahead and put that on our agenda for work sessions, to work with student government and various University of Wyoming entities that would bring items for us to consider. There always is going to be issues that directly involve the city, and we certainly want to, you know, gather everything we can so we have a good working relationship with everyone. Anything else from anybody on future council work topics? All right. So with that, I think the next thing we have on our agenda is to go to item number 20, and that's Councilor Pierce.
Okay, so I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding litigation. It's Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 10. We are also adjourning to discuss... Oh, I said that wrong. So personnel... I'm sorry. So personnel is Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral x. Litigation is Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 3. And also land negotiations. And that's Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 7. Did I get it right? There were lots of... Thank you.
Point of order?
Item number 20 on the agenda that specifies adjourn to executive session regarding personnel and then the relevant statute, but there isn't any mention...
Was that changed?
Yes, it was changed.
Was that changed?
There isn't on the agenda a change.
Excellent.
At the beginning of the meeting, that was introduced by the vice mayor and then seconded by the council. All right, so that answers that question.
Did we have a second?
We haven't yet.
Second.
Okay, second. So now, any discussion on the adjournment?
Can I just add that Councilman McKinney's timing is impeccable?
Going to be here for this all-important vote.
Well, thanks for still getting here to do what you can. I mean, that's great.
Exactly. I know he labors, and he doesn't have control over it.
All right. On this item, I think we can do a voice vote, correct? So all in favor of adjournment regarding these three items that we have, correct? Three items, as have been read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.